It's on.
Okay.
Good morning. Let's call the Plannings Commission meeting to order October 30th, about nine minutes after nine. At this time, I'd like to have Mr. Walter Johnson, if you would. Can you lead us in the indication, please, sir?
Bow with me, please. Our Father in heaven, thank you so much for this day. Father, thank for this opportunity to serve the people of Rankin County. Father, I pray that everything that transpires here today will be pleasing in your sight. We pray for those at home and abroad that protect our lives and allows to have these kind of open meetings. Father, we pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Okay, what we've got is consideration approval of September 29th, 2014 minutes.
It's a move.
And a motion by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Old business.
Okay, under old business, we're going to review hearings scheduled for Monday, November the 3rd. The first item is a conditional use request for Deborah Lindsay at 124 Der Cove. Der Cove is off of Andrew Chapel Road, and this property is at the very end. It's a one-acre parcel that's owned to RE1, and Deborah is requesting to replace an existing manufactured home that burned in 2007 with a 1999 16 by 80 mobile home. The aerial shows that there's one other home already on this property. This will be the second dwelling, and she has received an approval from the State Department of Health to install a new sewer system there. This is the location of where the mobile home will be placed, and these are adjoining properties.
Okay. Any questions on them?
No.
Okay, B.
Okay, the next item is a conditional use request for Wendy Yocum at 173 Brewer Road. Brewer Road is off of Highway 49. It's a 5.02 acre parcel that's owned to RE1A. She's requesting the conditional use to place a mobile home for her parents to live near her so she can help care for them. They're disabled. The aerial shows her existing home on this property. This is a view of her home. This is approximate location of where the manufactured home will be going, and these are surrounding properties.
Okay, any questions? C.
Okay, the last item for review is a conditional use request for Raymond Foxworth on Gablewood Trail. Gablewood is off of Highway 471. It's a 2.06 acre parcel that's owned to RE1, and he's requesting to place a 2014 28 by 56 manufactured home on the property. It's a vacant wooded lot, and this is a view of the actual lot, and these are surrounding properties.
All right, any questions? Is that everything on old business?
That is.
All right, new considerations?
Okay, the first item is a rezoning request of Herb Lee Puckett at 1961 Florence Byram Road. Mr. Puckett is requesting to rezone a 2.1 acre parcel on the corner of Friendship Road and Florence Byram Road from C3 to RE1A. This is actually Lot 1 of Friendship Acres subdivision. This property has never been used as commercial. The previous owner of the property requested a conditional use to place a manufactured home on the property in 2009 and was approved. You can see the existing single-wide mobile home on the property. Mr. Puckett bought that property with the existing manufactured home on it in 2011, and now what he wants to do is replace this existing single-wide with a 2015 28 by 52 manufactured home, and he's asking that the zoning be changed to reflect the residential use and match the zoning of the other lots in the Friendship Acres subdivision. This just shows his site plan. He's going to be placing the double-wide in the exact same spot as the single-wide. This is the property and the single-wide home that's on it now. This is actually a view of his lot as well, and these are surrounding properties.
It's well maintained.
We're going to set the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
I make motion, set the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
All right, the next item is a conditional use request for Gary Williams at 1043 Monterey Road. Mr. Williams is requesting the conditional use permit to add a 14 by 16 storage room onto his existing shop, Big Board Bikes. This property is zoned A1. This is his site plan showing his existing building. The addition will be on the west end of the building, 14 by 16. This is just a view of the existing building, and you can see here where he will be doing the addition.
Okay.
I make motion, set the public hearing.
Second.
And a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop. Questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Is that all we have on new considerations?
Yes, sir.
Okay, site plan, architectural review.
All right, the first item under site plan, architectural review, is Hickory Ridge Baptist Church. The church has submitted a master plan with three phases. They're requesting approval of Phase 1 for construction of a new church sanctuary and classrooms. It's a 2.65 acre parcel. It's owned to RE1A. The aerial just shows the existing property. This drawing shows the floor plan of the church, the seating area here. These are classrooms. They have 450 seats. It also shows Phase 1 parking of 139 spaces for handicap. They're showing the future Phases 2 and 3. This is their drainage plan and detention areas shown. Mr. Parker has reviewed the drainage plan, and there were some revisions that needed to be made. He's been working with People's Construction, and he received the runoff calculations, the revised runoff calculations late yesterday, and I'm not sure that he's ready to approve it at this time. And this just is the landscape drawing, showing some landscaping. This is a rendering of the building. The front of the building will be split-faced block and a concealed fastener panel system with a stucco finish. The sides and rear will be metal. The colors are cool Egyptian cotton, I mean, I'm sorry. John insisted I give the colors just for you, so I messed up. But anyway, let me try again. Cool Egyptian white, which is a beige or khaki color, and the roof will be cool dark bronze. This is just a picture of the wall panel fastener system, and Richard Ellerton with People's Construction is here if you have any questions. This is just another picture. I think this is an actual application where they've used it.
That's going to be on the front, right?
Right.
On the front?
Yeah, I don't have any questions.
And then these are just the elevations of the building. This is the actual site.
Okay, so do we have a, do we need to make a motion on that?
Yes, sir.
I think we probably need to make the motion.
Contingent upon this.
Right.
There you go. All right, I make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Morrison with a contingency, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Okay, the second item is a site plan, architectural review for Galilee Baptist Church at 198 Lib Vanderford Road. Lib Vanderford runs off Highway 41, 541. It's a 2.43 acre parcel that's owned to A1. You can see on the aerial photo the existing church and the pastor's home. This is their site plan. It shows the existing church. They're requesting approval of the site plan to add a 5,000 square foot metal building behind the existing church sanctuary. It will be used for a fellowship hall and recreation building. This is their floor plan. They'll have an open area, kitchen area and bath, storage area. The church has not submitted their drainage and runoff calculations to Mr. Parker, but they're working on getting those to him now, and this is just a picture showing what their building will look like. It'll be the same color, light stone, and have a gavel loom roof.
Okay.
This is just a view of the existing church. This is their pad, and that building will be going behind the existing church.
And you've already been out to discuss with the pastor and all the, I guess, the ones that, okay.
We met with them, and these are just surrounding properties.
Okay. Well, I make that motion to approve contingent upon the drainage approval with Buster's.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, the date for the next meeting to be determined at October 30th, 2014 meeting.
Most adjourned.
And a motion by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Renee. At this time, we have the, it's called to order the workshop for the Rankin County Board of Supervisors. We've got attendees Brian Grant, the MEO C, update on vector control spraying. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Y'all take care.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just wanted to give you guys an update on the vector control. We started about mid-April, whenever y'all directed us to start spraying. We've had a really good season. We've had a very limited number of West Nile cases in the county. I believe we've had five countywide, but only two of those were outside the municipalities. So, of course, we don't spray inside the municipalities except the ones we have inter-locals with. So, we did really good with that. My main thing I wanted to talk to y'all about was to see, to get some direction on when y'all wanted to stop spraying for mosquitoes. Generally, it's based around the weather timing. Of course, we're going through a little bit of a cold time right now. I think Saturday, we may get our first freeze, or first frost, I'm sorry, first frost on Saturday. So, I called around to the different municipalities to see when they would be stopping. Brandon is on October 31st. Florence is October 31st. Richland always does it when the time changes, which this year is November 2nd, so it's a couple of days off, and I have not been able to get in touch with anybody from Pearl. They won't call me back, but...
You know what, the long-range future for like the next, did you check on anything for like the next month? I know they kind of give a long range.
Yeah, we are expecting, National Weather Service is expecting an El Nino winter.
Right.
So, it's going to be colder than normal.
Okay.
Of course, this is Mississippi. We could have 80 degrees, putting up Christmas lights.
Right.
Which is a possibility. But right now, they're expecting to be a colder winter.
Okay.
This winter, so. The last concern complaint I had that I received was early September on, you know, the mosquitoes. So, just kind of want to get your direction and see when y'all wanted to stop, if y'all wanted to do when other municipalities are stopping, which would be tomorrow.
I think that's usually, if I'm not mistaken, that's usually about, that's pretty normal.
Yeah, when do we normally?
Well, I talked with the guy that did it last year, and he said it was about mid-November when they stopped, but we had some, we were warm weather all the way through mid-November last year.
Correct. Okay.
So, I can do whatever. I can keep them on the road a couple more weeks, or I can stop them tomorrow, whatever you guys advise.
What's the forecast? Do you, if you looked as far as a warm, you know, I know we have a little cold spell, but have you seen anything about what the long range is as far as?
Not that I've seen. I think we're going to maintain, we won't have as cold a weather as we're having this weekend.
Right.
But I think we're going to maintain around the 70s, mid-70s. Mosquitoes are only really active at 55 degrees and above, and their favorite time to fly, of course, is between 5:00 PM and 10:00. And so, if we're hovering around 50 degrees, my chemicals not really, doesn't work that well.
Right.
At colder temperatures and everything, so.
What is, are we still employ Jeff North to kind of consult with us, right?
Correct.
What is his recommendation?
He recommends basically, just basing off the weather. I haven't talked to him in the past few days with this recent cold snap we've got. I can get in touch with him again and see what he recommends.
See, see if you can do that before Monday's meeting, and that way we can make a justified decision on, I think that's, because with checking the next couple of weeks on the, you know, I know it's tough to forecast, you know. I'd love to be a forecaster, be paid for it, but, you know, it's one of those things, you never know exactly what the weather's going to do, you're exactly right, and you could call it, and then all of a sudden it turned 85, 90 degrees or whatever.
Right.
But, yeah, check with Jeff North if you would, if the guys are okay with this, and then Monday, we can make a decision on that.
I can check with him in a few minutes and send you guys an email.
Okay.
What he says.
You know, I know this year, our number's way down, but wasn't the state the same way?
Yes. Yes. Typically, your West Nile virus goes in cycles, five-year cycles, because the birds that take on the virus, they either die or they build up immunities to it. Once they build immunities to it, they're not affected by it the next year, so your West Nile cases will slope down. We're looking at probably the next two years. The baby birds don't have those immunities, so they contract and spread it.
Start peaking again.
So, probably about the next two years, it'll start peaking again, yes.
Okay. Town of Puckett, can you check with them? Have you, you been in contact with them as far as?
I haven't heard from them since our last contact with them about pricing and everything.
Right, and I know that it's probably a great time because during the wintertime, let's go ahead and at least check with them, and let's get geared up, I guess, for whatever inter-local agreement we need to make with them, because I do know that they're very interested in.
Are we going to start spraying for Puckett?
Well, it'd be like Pele Hachi, the basically, basically the kind of same kind of a circumstance from what I, and I talked to our attorney on that.
Yeah, what he referred to as an inter-local agreement.
Correct.
They pay us to do their mosquito spraying. Yeah, but are they going to pay us for another truck and another personnel to do it?
One way or the other, they're Rankin Countians. Thank you, Brian. I appreciate you.
Thank you. I'll get you an email today.
Appreciate you. All right. Looks like we have up Mr. Guy Warren and Paul Megason of Risk Management Partners.
Well, I got a good thought for what you could do with mosquito spraying. If Brian would give me a car, I'd be glad to patrol Puckett and spray for the mosquitoes.
I thought that you had, I thought you already had a car.
No, I can't get a car. I have tried and tried.
A long time ago, I thought you got a car, a badge, a gun, everything.
I had been promised a car.
I ain't writing, kid. Good to see you.
Have a normal badge. I got two, but I get an investigator badge.
I mean, more you need, and what specific kind you need.
I really need an investigator badge, and that's what he's holding back.
Brian.
Don't you have something that would be badge that'd say something like Bug Patrol?
I think. I'd love to see that's got that big old bug on top of it.
Yeah.
I want lights. I want lights.
His nose light up.
Sheriff, I'm okay with them having a car with all the electronics working, but make sure the engine won't crank.
That'd be okay, out of a little roadblock. Well, we're very, very pleased to present the upcoming renewals on all of the majority of the property and casualty insurance. As you can tell, Paul, my assistant summarized this and showing you guys the agents and the companies, as well as the rate decrease on all lines, and that is very, very unusual in today's times for, to get a rate decrease.
We had a slight rate increase on the auto.
Think I say it's 5,000.
Well, most of that was, we swapped out or deleted some older units and added newer units to the, but again, auto is one area that, man, the rates have just skyrocketed in the last several years. But overall, we've had an overall rate decrease on the program.
Why do we have such a reduction in our liability? That's huge.
Yeah, it's great. Wonderful.
Yeah.
Godsend right there.
Did we do something to make that happen?
Thank you, Sheriff.
That's actually not unlawful. I mean, it's just that company has had you, this is a second year.
Yeah.
And they wanted to keep you as a result of competition. The agent, we instructed them to send it out.
Sharpen their pencil?
That's right. That's right.
Good.
They wanted to keep the coverage.
That's sweet. Now, I just want to clarify something, so you're his assistant. I just wanted to clarify that.
Exactly.
Okay. Just that's what I heard. This is great.
Overall, the rates have pretty much come down on all the lines of insurance.
Right.
And a lot of the lines, like the property lines, they have increased the values on the properties, so, I mean, it's great. Besides what you paid last year, you got more exposure than you had the year before. That's a great thing.
We didn't have any outside interest as far as different agents looking at it.
Right.
So, it really was a smooth process. It was, as Paul said, a lot of changes, and we have been over all of this with Ms. Laura several times, making sure we had everything correct. This is actual, the proposal that we went through with her a couple times and got everything straightened out and added and deleted it should be.
Wonderful. Any questions?
Nope.
All right. Great. Y'all keep it up.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
The one thing I think they needed is a vote, because it does come up in November.
I think we've got it coming up. That's okay. We just needed to hear from you guys and the experts, and then we'll take a vote here in just a few minutes. Mr. Craig Slade, Board Attorney.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
This is going to be the proverbial handoff. I just wanted to quickly make an introduction that probably does not need to be made and just kind of set the stage for us here. At this time, I want to, with your indulgence, Mr. President, I want to recognize Carl Franco and Jeff McGee of JH&amp;H Architects to provide the board with a summary of their architect review of the Chancery Court Building and the Justice Court Building. I do want to say how much I appreciate the work and the effort this has gone into this review process on the front end. Very happy about how the various constituencies have worked together to try to figure out, at least at a basic level, the direction that we need to take this process as we go forward. It's pretty well-known that we've had some issues with both of the older courthouses and that we needed to go through the process of at least evaluating where we stood on those, and the process has been very smooth, helped along by the fact that we're working with folks that are professionals, and they know what they're, they know what they're talking about. And they've been very, very active in working both with myself, Ms. Laura, Ms. Janice, and others to make sure that we got good access, saw what we needed to see, and so in that respect, I appreciate the court systems and their willingness to work with us to provide us access to where we needed to see things, and we've had, we've had good cooperation all the way around. I also want to just point out that I'm also appreciative of our consulting engineer and Mr. George Bobo for their willingness to step up and to be a part of everything we're trying to do to stay plugged into this process, and so in that respect, it has been both a smooth process, but also one that encompasses, in my opinion, everything that we need to know on the front end as we try to make some at least preliminary decisions going forward. So, having said all of that, Paul, you and Jeff, come forward and share with us your report.
Thank you, Craig. Good morning, guys.
Good morning. I brought my top assistant.
There you go.
Because he's the only assistant. Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here. As Craig mentioned, and y'all are aware, for approximately the last eight weeks, the board has engaged us to do a review of the existing Chancery Court Building and Justice Court Building to look at some issues, and we've come here today, we've done basically a fairly extensive review of this in the preliminary stages, and as you can imagine, these are older buildings and limited plans, and so what our review is based on is basically visual assessments, a review of existing documents that are available, and then our experience for similar type facilities. So, what we want to do here today is not draw this out, but give you an approximate overview, brief overview, and it's very informal. Please feel free to interrupt me at any point, or Jeff, and ask any questions as we go through here. It won't take long, but I'd like to go through this just to give you a summary of it. The basic scope of our work focused on three areas, and these include the functionality of the existing buildings with regard to their current uses, Chancery and Justice Court Buildings, and for those facilities. The review of these buildings with regard to compliance with accessibility of Americans with Disabilities Act and current building codes, and three, the feasibility of looking at these buildings, whether it be feasible or more appropriate expenditures or funds for renovation, or to look at planning for new facilities. So, those are the three areas we focused on. And one thing I would mention, when we're talking about the use of these buildings and how they comply with current codes, remember that it's our assumption and our knowledge that we have today that these buildings, when they were originally built, met the current codes at that time, but obviously, over years, many years, codes have changed. So, a lot of these, these issues that we may talk about briefly are depending on whether or not these buildings have major renovation done to them. But our findings are basically as follows. The Chancery Court, as you know, is an old building that was never designed to be used. It was, it's been many uses from our investigation, knowledge, it's grocery store, city hall, possibly, police stations, but the bottom line is the building was never designed to be a court facility. It has been adopted as best as possible over the years, but because of that, it doesn't really function efficiently as a court building. The Justice Court, on the other hand, is composed of two parts. The original historic part of it is, was designed as a courthouse, but as the climate has changed and judicial processes has progressed and issues with society, and codes have changed, it really doesn't come up to current courtroom standards as of today. Now, it's, the second part of that building is an annex building that was constructed approximately in 1957, and it was not really built as a courthouse, but it was built to provide, I assume, ancillary services in support of that. So, together, it serves as a courthouse part of it. In general, both these facilities have similar issues. They have functional issues, efficiency issues in the way they're laid out, accessibility issues, issues with current code standards, and things of that nature. They all have maintenance and operational issues, and they all have a lack of parking, just in general, from what is needed in today's modern facilities that are used for Chancery and Justice Courts. So, we spent a lot of time looking at this and looking at some options and what we thought would be the best alternatives for the board and its taxpayers of Rankin County. And so, we come to you today with a recommendation based on what we've seen that's going on currently with new facilities and existing facilities, and what we think would be the best use of taxpayer's funds, and we think that is to construct new facilities for justice and Chancery Courts. And let me tell you how we arrived at that, because I know people will say, well, you've only been looking at it for eight weeks. How can you make that decision? One of it's based on what we've done in other facilities and what we looked at and studied, and one of them is based on what we see in these existing facilities. Essentially, the current existing spaces have a lack of functional space. If you've ever been in these buildings, you know that. There's just, they've outgrown some of their needs. There's a lack of accessibility in these buildings. That's pretty obvious. There have been some attempts to improve that, and, you know, those were good attempts, but they do not comply with the current Americans with Disability Act. They have, because they are older and they're, they have a lot of issues with maintenance and operational. They really have outlived their usefulness for court facilities. Basically, when you design buildings, they have a useful life of somewhere between 50 and 75 years. I know the existing Chancery Court Building is older than that, and the courthouse, the historic courthouse, is, I think, older than that, at least approaching 70, 80 years old. So, in reality, they've really outlived their useful life expectancy. Looking at cost of renovation versus cost of new facilities, we understand that if you were to build new facilities, there is a very substantial cost implied to go along with those facilities, especially in today's market. However, if you're going to renovate facilities and bring them up to standards and bring them up and bring them up to code compliance, and bring them up to accessibility standards, it's also gonna be a very, uh, large cost expenditure to do that. And the end result would be that you'd be spending a lot of money renovating buildings that in the end would still be old in their basic building systems and structural frame. Now, part of that renovation could update the building systems, but unless you're planning on redoing the floors, slabs, roofs, walls, you're still gonna spend a lot of money putting it into an older building, uh, frame. There are serious issues with these existing buildings, as I mentioned earlier, in guard to public and staff accessibility, public and staff security, uh, maintenance and operation costs. Uh, you can gut these buildings, or at least in some instances, uh, in the Chancery Court, in looking at that, there's a possibility to renovate it, but it would, in our opinion, require extensive renovation, which is essentially gutting it, and then some type of addition in order to provide enough space and function and security for a Chancery Court function. And the same would be true, to some extent, with the historic building. Uh, in other words, what you're trying to do to make these buildings work is you're trying to fit a round peg in a square hole. That's essentially what you would be doing, and that's what the money would be. If you decided to renovate these buildings, you would not really be addressing the parking needs, and there's, for many bodies that have ever been there, there's obvious parking needs. There's inadequate parking, there's not code compliant parking with ADA, uh, there's no direct access that's into that. On the other hand, designing and planning for new facilities would provide much more efficient facilities. In other words, you would design and plan for facilities that would be designed to be used for Chancery Court and Justice Court facilities. They wouldn't be trying to make something fit into a building space or a structural frame that was not originally intended for it. This would lead to more efficiency in design, it would allow for public access, it would meet codes, it certainly would allow to improve the security aspects of these buildings. Uh, you'd have energy efficiency, you'd be using current construction materials and standards, and you'd all be using today's current systems and current technology. In the end, it's our opinion that new facilities would save the taxpayers of Rankin County a lot of money. And why I say that is because, one, you won't have to go back and retrofit, two, they're gonna be much more energy efficient design, so you're gonna have a lot, uh, lot of savings in, in operations costs. It's gonna be tremendous savings in maintenance costs. Uh, there are, there are issues with the current buildings, roof leaks, some wall leaks, all those type things that, that are gonna need expenditures over the years. The other thing that, in our opinion, new facilities would do would be allow you to, to plan and grow, not only meet your current needs, but future needs. And, and we all know that, that Rankin County has been exploding over the years in population growth, and, and I'm not, we hadn't done a study to see what the economics and the, and the demographics are gonna be for the future, but it's fairly obvious to us, all you have to do is look down Lakeland Drive and some other places where there's gonna be continued growth, not only commercial but residential, and of course, the educational system is rated very high in this state, and so that brings in growth. So these facilities will allow you not only to plan for the current needs, but also future needs. So, for all these reasons, we, we just think that the best use of money, uh, for the Rankin County is to build new facilities. And I can honestly say that, since I live here and pay taxes. I, I, just as a taxpayer, would have an issue spending a lot of money in some of these older buildings, and then still not having what we feel, in our opinion, would be functional and efficient buildings. That's our recommendation. If the board would choose to go forward with that, then, then this is kind of where we would go from here and be our recommendation. We would recommend that the county proceed with a planning process to evaluate new facilities for the Chancery and Justice Court, and this would include the following steps. One, provide surveys and investigations of potential sites for the new facilities. We would suggest and recommend that the county engineer be authorized to provide surveys, uh, and to look at sites. That's gonna be very critical in parking needs and drainage needs, and even in, uh, understanding soil conditions in which would affect the cost of buildings. But right now, uh, we have some, we've looked at just general areas and possible facilities, but we really have no, uh, detailed data that could, could help with that. The next step would be develop a needs list of functions and spaces that would be required for these new facilities. Now, in our study, we did do some assumptions and planning based on facilities in other parts of the state, on what type spaces would be needed, but in real, reality, what is needed is to sit down with the users and with the board and determine the exact spaces that would be needed. This is the most efficient way to make sure you don't just build something that's larger than actual needs, but at the same time, you don't shoehorn yourself in so that you cannot plan for future growth. From that would come, uh, program of spaces and allow to define exactly how many square feet and what functions would go into these buildings.
Can I stop you right there?
Yeah.
And, and doing that, Eric, how would you come up with your space needs?
We, we would compare it to existing facilities around the state, and then we would meet with the users to get their input, and then we would, we would compare the two. And, and during this process, it's very important that you, you identify what are wishes and what are needs, and not only what are current wishes and current needs, but what are future needs. And, for instance, there's a very strong possibility there's gonna be a need for a third Chancery courtroom facility. So we would, we would probably recommend that, that whatever facility is designed include at least three Chancery courtrooms. Uh, we would look at the support services that's needed, we would look at the security needs, and that's part of the problem right now, is that in court facilities in today's climate, the court staff, the judges, need to have separation from the public and from, uh, that. In other words, both, both the public and the court staff are important to the use of these buildings, but because of the, uh, just what goes on in these facilities, there needs to be separation in order to provide security, and at the same time, providing egress, so that there's safe egress in and out in case something was to happen like a fire. And that is one of the things that, uh, all of these buildings, if there's been some, uh, attention to try and address this, they just really have not been able to do that successfully, because they're working within this existing framework of the existing structure and building. But we would sit down and do that and develop a, a space program from that. That would say, say you need twenty thousand square feet or whatever for one building or whatever, and then from there, we would decide if the most efficient use is two-story, one-story, and that's depending on, uh, land available, cost of construction, things of that nature. Did that answer, or did that?
Yeah, it did.
So what, uh, I guess what you're saying is getting with the, uh, with the people that actually use this, these facilities, excuse me, and then after you compile all that, then basically come back to the board and talk to us and kind of work through all this as a system?
That's exactly right. Because ultimately, you as a board have the authority to approve or suggest. We, we make recommendations, again, based on our experience and our expertise. And, uh, sometimes this is, you know, you, there's always trying to figure out how far you go with these things versus funds.
Right.
Uh, we realize there's not unlimited funds, and, and part of this process is being good stores in getting the most for the building and best uses, not just the biggest, but the, the best use, uh, and, and, and looking at that. But we would come back to the board, uh, we would do the preliminary planning and develop the program, come back to the board, probably on several occasions, say, "This is where we're at here, this is what we think is really needed, this is some suggestions maybe from the users," and we could, you know. We, we usually give a value to that and develop a matrix and says, "This is a top priority, or this is middle, or this could be a future." This is something that may be needed in the future, but maybe could be added on later so that you don't just create a space. But we would look at that aspect of it.
Right, as, and as you're going through this, you know, I've, um, as a Rankin County supervisor for downtown Brandon, I'd like to, you know, not only the user, but include the city of Brandon in this, in, in your talkings with this, because I do know that they're developing downtown plans and everything like that, so I'd like to see at least some input from them too. You know that, you know, that's
Well, their building department has to approve it.
Exactly.
Right.
But I mean, as far as just the overall, overall look of, you know, and not to say that they're gonna tell us where to put it, but I'm just saying that that would be
What are you saying?
Well, I'd love to see, love to see some input.
We'll have to go for them and let them see what
Right. But I mean, that would be on the, on the front end, I would love to see some talking with them also.
They're not gonna tell us what to build.
Right.
We, you need, we need to work with the communities where these possibly be located, for sure, and, you know, uh, it all goes forward for one goal, and, uh, there's some compromises always given in these things. You know, if money, funds are unlimited, we could just about do anything, but funds are always limited. And, and certainly want to work with what they're doing in Brandon. I know they've developed or are developing a master plan for downtown, and, uh, if, if, if the site studies and things determine that's where it needs to be, then that certainly is something that needs to be worked with, not only for now, but for future planning.
Right.
And part of, part of some of this is that, you know, it's been reactive, some of these facilities have been reactive, and we want to be proactive.
Right.
What we want, don't want to do is be wasting taxpayers' money building something that in two years has to be, you know, torn down or readjusted.
In saying, in saying that, that you keep talking about future, um, in your planning, what would you estimate your plan? Um, this would cover for the future, 'cause I understand you're saying there's no way to renovate what we have that would, uh, provide for a long-range future. So, when you say what you're, you're recommending, um, you're planning for what, next fifteen, twenty years, thirty years?
Ten to fifteen years generally is about as far as you can go. Uh, and what, what we would do, we'd, we'd go back and try and look at the growth pattern of Rankin County, uh, and try and use that historical information to see what would be needed. And then, and then we would sit down and see, I mean, this, you know, if the population doubled in ten years, I don't know that we could project that, but we would try and look at, at, at the growth patterns. And where that comes into effect, obviously, is, is how many more judges would be authorized and how many more courtrooms. And what we, what we try and do with facilities, and sometimes courtrooms are not as easy to do that as, say, schools, you try and lay out a footprint of a building that can be easily added on to. With schools, that's pretty easy, you have wings, you can just plop down classrooms. Courtrooms is not quite as easy and risk, really much more difficult because of the security issues. But location, locating those facilities would be key in that land growth.
Security is one of the, I mean, big factors. It's a shame that it's, uh, society has forced that, but that, that is in every aspect. Uh, you have to look at the, the security side of it, no matter if it's going to the movies now.
It's unfortunate, but like you say, it's just the realities, and all we have to do is pick up a newspaper. I mean, and I think it was recent last week at a high school, they had a shooting. And there's no way that, uh, the design of buildings can prevent this, but they can certainly limit the possibilities.
Sure, right.
And, and that's, that's the goal, is to provide safe and secure environment, environments, as well as, at the same time, accessible environments to, to all of the public. And that, that's an issue right now in these buildings.
Well, kind of a no-brainer if you tell us it'll cost us more to renovate what we have, and, and so, we definitely have some decisions to make as far as going forward on buildings. But are you saying, when you say buildings or facilities, are you just saying, "'Cause it's two different courts,' or are you suggesting two different buildings?
That would be up to the board, but my approach would be we could look at both options. Uh, I, I do know there's a different philosophy between Chancery Court and Justice Court. Uh, the board can, can direct us in that. We could look if this board's desire, we could look at two separate facilities, or we could look at the possibility of combining facilities.
I think that's, uh, really where we are today, is that's part of why you're here and what we're, we're looking, we wanted you here for, and this is what your job is, to help evaluate these things, to bring back to us so we can make a, a clear, uh, decision as well as financial, how it's best for, for citizens of Rankin County and financially.
We certainly
I think it's kind of premature, I guess, to really say what would be recommended.
Well, could you design a building for both of them to go in and address all their security needs and?
I think, I think anything is possible. What we would do, Jay, is, is look at that option and put the pluses and minuses. One of the pluses would probably be, uh, a savings in construction cost. Uh, I don't know if
Well, that's enough for me.
I, well, let me go back, I don't know, it, you have to weigh that against, are there any new security issues by doing that? And that's what we'd have to get into, we have not, we've not gone down that road completely. But in theory, uh, you know, whether it be one building or two buildings, it could be done. But I think what we, our goal would be, as you said, you're, we would provide you the information
For us to choose.
That's right, and we, we try and develop a matrix that says, "Okay, this is the pluses for doing, uh, one building, and this is the minuses for doing one building versus the pluses and minuses for doing two separate buildings." And we would, we would try to get input of the users, obviously the judges and, and the courts, and get their input into that, uh, as well, and present, present that input based on our experience of that.
Yeah. Well, we are limited in area.
Well, that's, that's where I was gonna say, a lot of it, uh, depends on limited in area and also the parking issue. No matter what, whatever you come up with, downtown Brandon really is very limited on parking, so that's gonna, that's gonna
That, that's gonna be a major issue.
Major issue, whatever you come out and come, come up with, whichever option.
So our next step would be for you to go out and, and come up with the square foot we need for the facilities?
It's really, it's two-fold. I think first thing is we need to get the county engineer to do some surveys for potential sites, and then we would develop, once we know what, what's available, then we can develop, well, at the same time, while he's doing that, we can develop square foot needs, space programs. But we really need to know what sites are available before we could put together how these square foots go together. Uh, generally, a lot of times, it's more economical to build a one-story facility versus a two-story facility if you just have plenty of land available. It's just the opposite, if you're limited on land, then, then it makes more sense from a economic standpoint to build, uh, two stories, uh, or higher, depending on what your functions are, than pay for land costs. Uh, there's different ways to solve parking needs, and you know, uh, if you're limited on land, a lot of times down there, you build parking garages, but those are extremely expensive and generally not the best use of funds if you've got, it's usually more economical to obtain land than it is to build a parking garage.
Well, wouldn't we not need to know the number of parking spaces needed before we selected the site?
Well, it goes hand in hand. We, we could work with the county engineer to determine, determine that, uh, how many spaces would be needed, and we, we would, we could do that and go forward with that immediately. Uh, we know, for instance, in the existing justice court, uh, there's approximately a hundred and fifty seats. So we know if that's gonna go forward with the same size, then you're gonna need a certain number of parking spaces to accommodate that, accommodate the judges, and accommodate the staff. Their parking needs seem to be much greater than Chancery Court needs. Uh, so we know the Chancery Court needs intuitively would be less. Now, we don't know exactly how, how that's, because we're talking about looking at a third Chancery Court as opposed to two right now, but we can make that determination. And then that will help us identify what site, what sites are available and would be adequate enough for that.
So what do we, our next step really would be then to approve, uh, do it some way we need to approve you all to move forward?
What's, uh, what's your, what do you say there?
If, if the board is of a mind to go ahead and take action today based on the recommendation that you've heard today, obviously, we'll, we'll want to add that action to the agenda first.
Okay.
But then, uh, a motion that would authorize Buster to go forward with topographical survey work, uh, soil analysis type work, and at the same time, choose J H and H, authorize J H and H to proceed with programming requirements and the preparation of documents that would be preliminary in nature and design-oriented to give you guys an idea of what your square footage requirements are, and then to do cost projections on the basis of that, which is the big deal.
Yeah, right.
I don't know why we wouldn't, wouldn't then add this.
I'll make the motion.
I make the motion to add, uh, this to the agenda, um, to authorize engineer services to move forward on, uh, site plan, as well as, uh, J H and H to move forward on the, uh,
Programming.
description, programming, and analysis that they are, uh, working on now.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Now, we just need a motion on approving this?
I make the motion.
Did that sound good to you?
It sounds fine.
Did that cover everything?
It does, absolutely. Okay. Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison to proceed, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
And we're, I know that this process is, is a little complicated, but anytime you have any questions, we're available, and we'll be glad to come back before, and
I'm sure you will.
Well, next time, bring Jeff with you, so, you know, he can help a little bit.
Yeah, if it gets too complex, yeah, if it gets too easy, just let him take over.
We'll, we'll be talking with you, I'm sure.
Thanks, guys.
Would y'all stick, would y'all stick around and let me talk to you afterward?
Sure.
Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got, uh, Ms. Laura Oster.
Yeah, I think I'm gonna substitute for Ms. Laura, if it's okay.
Craig Slade, I'm gonna be substituting Ms. Laura.
The first item under Ms. Laura's section, uh, item A, is the request, uh, to request approval of the recommendation The first item under Ms. Laura's section, uh, item A is the request, uh, to request approval of the recommendation on the following insurances, and you see the county property to go with insurance associates through One Beacon, the amount of one fifty-six oh five. The general liability would be placed with One Beacon and the amount of sixty-six four ninety-six. Auto insurance with Dean Kirby through F C C I and the amount of three oh seven one forty-four. Fire, uh, services insurance with Wellington Associates through V F I S and, uh, of Mississippi, Louisiana, the amount of one eighty-eight five thirty-nine. And authority to sign those documents and issue checks.
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions?
Yeah, I, I noticed there's two insurances missing on here.
The, is it the sheriff's liability?
No, the, our workers' comp. When does that come out?
The, the renewal on that is, uh, I want to say that that's December thirty-one, so it's a later renewal. These are all on here because they have November one renewal dates.
Well, I thought our, we also, that, uh, our dental envision was, uh.
Yeah, when's dental envision?
What is the date on this?
I thought it was November.
I'll have to look, but they've been in contact in getting all that information together with our current provider of the dental and different things. They have been gathering that and then open enrollment will happen at that time is when, right before then is when they do all that.
I, I just thought November was.
I thought it was November also.
Uh, I, I know that that's been in progress, a work in progress already, but it's not quite ready to go on yet.
So we're looking at possibly the middle of November then?
I can look it up and let you know, but I can give you, and Laura will be here on Monday to answer those questions, but she has been dealing with, uh, Bobby Peoples and getting.
Well, I was here that day. He came by and I think they said it was November.
That's what I was, that's what I was understanding.
Do you know if it's November one?
I think it was.
Jay, I, I don't think it's the post of November. I think that's.
So if it is, we can do it Monday?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's right.
All right.
Janice, can you and Craig check with, uh, Laura and I, just text her or whatever, make sure whatever the date is? Okay, thank you. Any more questions?
You said something about the sheriff's liability.
Sheriff's.
Yeah, I don't think that's renewed until it's later. These are, these are November one renewal days.
I'm sure that went down too, though. Oh, that's awful.
Choke him up.
Well, Mickey said to your stomach, you know, it was sued about every other week. And, uh, this guy got sued, he never served a lawsuit this one. And Dixon, I paid this a lot of bad interest and he got sued for a couple, twenty-five thousand dollars. This guy sued him, we didn't give him his commissary money back, and it was, uh, poof on the wall and sale, and he got the fix from that on his private parts. It's like, why are you touching your face? You think that's what it was? But he's, we're getting sued over that. So that's going to be, you know, the cheapest, the lowest place for it, eleven thousand dollars over a bogus lawsuit. It's just ridiculous.
Yeah, Richard Broad over in Edward was, uh, yesterday late about the deductible on one and it was twenty-five thousand dollars.
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
He was explaining that to me and I was like.
This is in the, this is in the jail?
In jail, I'd be letting you sue you for anything, even if it was a cost to you.
Well, I mean, let me ask you a question, Sheriff, and I know this is kind of crazy because there are, we do have cameras in there, I guess, some places, but there's, I guess, some places.
Oh, I've, no, I've got a judgment against me, but they can still sue you.
Yeah.
They can still file the lawsuit, even if I have all evidence showing we didn't do anything wrong, they can still sue you.
Yeah.
That's a process.
And I have to, I have to be, I have to, the, the, the.
Do we have to, uh, bring in our liability attorneys every time or can we do some of that in-house?
You can, it's not many times. If you do it, anytime you get sued, it's going to be the attorney fees are going to be.
There's a trade-off. By having the liability insurance, they get to select who defense counsel is. But you don't get to tell them who the lawyer's going to be. So unless we can work something out with a provider where they allow us to have choice of counsel and there are some.
That's not what I was getting at. If our deductible's going, just like with automobile insurance, if you have a wreck and it costs you less than what your deductible is.
Right.
Would you not just hire an attorney to cover that?
The problem, though, is you don't know that on the front end. There's no way you could possibly know that the outside exposure that you've got is up to the deductible amount. You could get hammered by one of these with some kind of crazy judge or some kind of crazy set of facts that you didn't anticipate, you know, with a large verdict. And if you have not included the carrier on the front end.
Yeah.
They will deny claim on the basis of no notice.
Okay.
Say you wouldn't have to notify them.
Right.
And I, some of them, I think, probably will, you know, be worth the life because, like, one guy later, they were certain failure. He was trying to punch the detention officer through the tray hole. So the officer shut the tray hole, we got his fingers in it and cut off the tip of his finger when we shut the tray hole. We, we carried him to the hospital, we got him fixed up.
Cha-ching.
But still, even though it's, it's him doing it, you know, Washington might have done a play for it.
Yeah.
That's the trade-off.
Yeah.
All right, any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Item B is the request for approval to pay the registration fees in the amount of two hundred dollars for Mark Rotten to attend the Uniform Standards of Professional Appraisal Practice course for continuing education on November four. You can see this is a time issue here, guys, and to pay any travel-related expenses.
Please approve.
Motion by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Review of agendas for November third, two thousand fourteen.
I only have one under C, uh, under law, under administrative. What, just, what is that exactly? I mean, I understand that she's going to, is this something we really have to have? Somebody that renewed her? Looks at background, pictures.
That is something in the.
No, I think that's to take pictures for the website.
Well, it's just.
Y'all, did y'all, y'all discuss that?
That's background, pictures is for the website.
Yeah.
Contracts to do them.
I don't know how much it is.
I don't either. That's what I was really asking about.
It's really, it's why it's listed as a discussion item. Uh, it needs to be something that you guys hear about.
Okay.
And then decide whether or not you want to even consider it. I think you'll hear more about that at the time of the discussion.
That's, that's my thing. It just kind of.
Yeah, if there's not any proposed action on that item.
Well, what is B? Why are we, why are we having to do this on B? Is he changing companies or something?
No, no, no.
He's been with Regent's about two years now, um, but we just wanted to, the, the interaction that Mickey has to do on behalf of employees that are having issues with claims that are being evaluated is that he's subject to HIPAA regulations. So what this will do is provide a blanket release and, uh, indemnification type of setup for him to be protected in the event of a claim that he has accessed personally identifiable information of a county employee. So it's a, it's a HIPAA C Y A.
Well, why is this just now coming up?
Uh, he asked for it.
Oh.
One of those things where we haven't considered it in the past because it wasn't our deal.
Yeah.
Apparently this is a deal for him. If you guys want Rod, uh, Roddy, if y'all want Mickey to, uh, come help us understand that better, we can get him here.
Uh, I just didn't know if he was making some kind of change.
No changes. This is a blanket authorization on release for HIPAA purposes.
All right. The holiday declarations?
Uh, I, that is, um.
The what?
Because of the extra days that the agency of the executive has and y'all are the executive of the county. The additional days are not set by statute. That's at the discretion of y'all.
Well, we've always done what the governor did.
Yes, and a proclamation came out and there's an error in the proclamation. I have called on that error. And I supposed to call back later today to see if they're going to rescind that one and then issue another one.
Is that the one on a Wednesday?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
And also it says January the second is a holiday, two thousand fourteen, not fifteen. So I did make a call. That person that's a constituent of the governor, um, that deals with him all the time is going to make a call on behalf today to see if they're going to correct that. And he's supposed to call me later today, but we have to approve those extra days because that's not set by statute. Is that your discretion?
These additional days, like after Christmas and after Thanksgiving?
Right, and it's Christmas Eve right now is that additional day. It's just that Friday. Everything else is Thursday, Friday, except for Christmas. It's Wednesday, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, Thursday. Leaves you to come back to work on the twenty-sixth, which, um, some of the, uh, other, uh, departments assumed after told not to assume, that do not do anything until I hear the proclamations coming out and what the days are. So they went ahead and set things around, assuming Thursday, Friday. I said, I sent out an important email. I said, pay attention, this is not the assumption which I told you to wait. And I got some replies back and I understand the other phones have been ringing off the hook also. So I kind of expect maybe an additional proclamation to come out to change some things. It may not.
So does the governor take these days?
The, the, some of the states work skeleton crews during those days, but yes, that's his proclamation. It has come out and I have a copy of the proclamation. So it's up to y'all is to decide if you're going to have skeleton crews on those extra days or if you actually go along with his agency discretion in closing. Most of the agencies do, but some of them more, uh, busy agencies do.
You're really muddying this up.
Yeah, I know. That's because I'm waiting on that other one. And I'm getting on there because you've got to approve the extra days if you want to. We always usually do, and as most of state agencies do, but they are skeleton crews working times.
I don't think it's going to be very productive. I mean, really. If you come back for one day, I don't see that.
I was just asking because in the past, we've always just done, approved whatever the governor did.
This is his approval right now.
Okay, that's what I was getting at.
Oh, this is his extra days?
Okay.
Yes, that's his extra days.
That's what I was asking.
Oh, well, if we're.
But you don't have to approve extra days and I thought that's what.
No, I was just asking, is this what the governor selects?
Oh, this is what the governor's doing.
It's verbatim, but it may change.
Okay, well, that clears the mud right up.
Yeah.
If it changes, I won't change the word. It may be confusing. Y'all can understand what you asked.
Right.
All right, let's went to Vanilla Shake then.
What's, uh, consent on the, um, first one on the reservoir community center?
Yes.
On the reimbursement refund?
She canceled sixty days prior to. She's.
Okay, so she falls within that. Okay. Go down to G then. What, explain that one on the West Rankin Parkway Phase One Bridge.
Oh, they called and requested that we go ahead and pay our amount we've, we've agreed to upfront.
Is that the amount we agreed to?
Two point two million?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Well, we've agreed to several different, each time it's gone up.
I was fixing to say.
That's what it is, last and final.
This is the balance.
You sure?
Yes, sir.
Last and final?
Notice, notice the dates on there that we put in there. The interlocal from twenty twelve was a million and a half.
Uh-huh.
May fifth, twenty fourteen, Brad came over and you guys listened to their spiel about additional costs on the bridge, construction, and you granted an additional seven fifty that day. Both of those are already in the minutes approved.
Yeah.
So you're doing nothing more than going ahead and funding the obligation you've already agreed to pay.
Right, and all this is coming out of the bridge cover.
Okay, so it's coming out of the bridge.
And they're going to, as, you know, just like what we did with East Metro, as they spend the money on the bridges and covers, they will send us proof so that we can verify that they've, uh, they've spent our money the way they asked or told us they were.
There's a lot. On East Metro, we didn't, we didn't send them the.
We did it, and, and the difference is, the difference is, I, I think there may be a cash flow issue here. Uh, you, you know, whoever's the lead on it has to front all the money and then get reimbursed.
Wait for reimbursements?
Yeah, I, I'm thinking this is probably going to help fill some of that gap.
Right. And there is a request letter from Brad where they set out the request for the full payment now. And, uh, it very clearly says Rankin County is under no further obligation of any kind with respect to the caption project.
Okay.
We done.
So. Okay.
I talked to Laura about it. She said she preferred it this way, actually.
That way is all the paperwork's done.
She don't have to monthly pay bills monthly.
Gotcha. That's kind of that, but that's.
Same thing.
What it is, it's just basically instead of paying by reimbursement, it's, it's basically giving the full shot and then.
Correct. We are.
Send that back, I can share with y'all.
Gotcha.
The difference between the interest on the funds and the headache associated with keeping up the paperwork.
Right.
Give them the money.
Gotcha.
They got to have a making project.
And that's not going to drag the, uh, you said that's out of Rotten, Rotten Bridge?
No, it's out of Bridge.
Bridge, just out of Bridge and Covert?
Yeah.
Okay. And that won't, that won't hurt anything on that then? Is that correct?
Just some feelings.
Mr. Dale? I guess, I guess you'd have to look at where it's at and everything like that and then we'll have to make some future decisions then, right? Okay. I'm stuck. Where are we at with, uh, what did we make a decision on? Did we, did we go out to advertise for a manager, programs and events coordinator out at, uh, the last time? So we've already put that out?
Yes.
Okay. What's the deadline on that?
I don't know. Ms. Laura has all that. She's taking care of all that.
Okay.
No new ones have been recently.
Yeah.
Well, the thing about it, it still came out, I think word is about the same way. It just had a different title on the, uh, building.
Oh, I thought she reworked that.
I don't know. Somebody called me about it. Says, word is about the same. What are you doing? So I'm just wondering what they said.
Well, I, I know.
They changed from, uh, agriplex to multipurpose or something.
Can you find out whenever you're discussing with her also, see if you can find out what the deadline on that is too?
I will, um, but I know that she did rework it.
Okay.
We, I found the other one and she did rework it.
Okay, yeah, if you can get me the deadline on that too.
Since we've decided, uh, you know, we're not going to renovate buildings and we're going to build something new, I'm assuming that we don't have to worry about taking care of the ADA issues currently.
Well, you know, I, I wouldn't go that far. Obviously, there's always going to be the possibility, Jay, that somebody would actually file a claim, even in this interim stage. My hope would be that with the understanding that we're already initiating the process, that even the Department of Justice, even this Department of Justice.
Yeah.
Would understand that we are moving forward with a process that addresses all of those issues. And so, uh, because you guys have chosen today to move forward with the process of planning for new construction, I'm less inclined to think that we would face that. But we don't really control whether or not we are going to be tending to some particular ADA issue on those facilities because they're going to continue to function.
I mean, we have an ADA bathroom in the building.
Yes, sir.
You know, but in, in Justice Court.
That's right.
We just don't have it on the floor.
Correct. But we have other, we have other issues beyond just that.
Well, and then Chancery, you know, we're, uh, surely we're not going to be required to put in an elevator, you know, while we're building something else.
Right. I, my assumption as I'm sitting here today is that even with a potential claim being filed.
We're moving forward, we'll take care of that.
Well, that and just the practical reality of the timing, litigation involving an ADA claim is going to probably take longer than to get us to a point where we've got new buildings constructed.
It takes quite a while with an ADA claim, I can assure you.
It, it wouldn't make a lot of sense to have to deal with that issue now, especially since we've got new construction. I think there'd be a lot of credit in our favor about that, but it could happen.
I know in the past we discussed, like, uh, it's been mentioned moving the clerk's office land records with the court too. And, uh, I don't really think we need to do that.
That's part of the evaluation.
Yeah, that'll be part of that evaluation. That'll be a good, that'll be a good piece for them to.
It's not up to them to decide. It's up to us to decide.
No, no.
But I mean, give some ideas.
Give some ideas on the cost factor. Because if it's one that's going to be somewhat connected or close to, then why would we? You know what I'm saying? It's kind of one of those.
Well, if we move them, it's always been said, if we move him, then it will affect the other two offices.
Right.
So, I mean, I don't, and we've operated for twenty years with the land records and court records not being in the same building. Yeah, I, I just, uh, that's, that's my personal.
The court order clearly said, if we, it would only be one.
Right, yeah.
Well, at least we're addressing, we can move on from the, the, the initial, what we had to look at from the, uh, refurbished to now new construction, at least we've answered that, so what we need to.
Well, I think though, our, the architects probably will need to know.
Which direction?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if, if, uh, if we do, we gotta do a lot of consideration of what we'll do here.
Correct.
One.
It'd be a domino, domino effect, basically.
Yeah, what we can use this far or whatever, I mean, that's, that's all part of, to me, the reason makes this such a broad picture.
We're about to be out of.
If they vacated the land records office, then that possibly could be renovated for the sheriff's needs for administrative office space.
Yeah, also be, could be renovated then for the, uh, building department and the nine-one-one and the, uh, health department, possibly. I mean, honestly, if we're gonna move out of the, if you're gonna talk about it, you're gonna move out of the courthouse, you need to move out of it.
Right, why not leave them where they are? I mean, there's no problems where they are.
I think you're gonna get away from it, just get away from it.
We're still gonna have to use the building, we can, with storage.
Get out of that building, I'm, we're getting out of the building.
I don't think we're gonna be able to do that.
We're gonna still have to maintenance and all that, if you wanna.
Yeah.
Talk about it, I'm, we will get, we're gonna make this step and get out of it, I think we need to be out of it. Otherwise, we're still gonna be having to be responsible for so many things.
Well, the only thing we would have left there is, like you said, the building department and the health department.
And the nine-one-one.
Yeah.
Right.
Actually, we probably move nine-one-one upstairs where they are, so that people won't have to be going to two different spots to be getting addressed when we wanna build a house.
Yeah, yeah, that would be good, one, one stop, that's all.
I mean, that floor has an ADA bathroom already. I don't, I don't think we have to do anything, we could help, you know, pay off our debt for this new courthouse and then maybe, you know, or somebody else can, obviously.
Yes, it depends on what you're gonna do with some of this other, the, some of the other buildings that you vacated.
Well.
Other, uh, office spaces.
Why would we wanna keep that Chantry building?
I don't know, that's what I'm saying, I don't know.
Well, Brandon may have a, a need for it.
A great need for it, I don't know.
In their downtown, uh, you know.
Revitalization.
Yeah, we'll sell it to them cheap.
Sell?
Well, I meant give, but, you know.
Oh.
Or auction that baby off.
I was gonna try to list it.
You won't be getting much commission, I don't think.
No conflict.
Just kidding.
Just kidding. You want that part of the records?
Own record.
Just kidding, it was just a joke. All right, anything else on that? I know that, uh, like I said, I think that they're gonna be working diligently on getting this and I'm appreciative of Buster and, uh, George working hand in hand with all this, because it's gonna be, it's gonna be a, we'll see how, uh, how much Wheaties Buster has been eating, so we can see how this goes.
He just said Buster worked the same thing.
I know, that's, you know, I, well, I'm giving you the benefit of the doubt. Right now, he's number one, number one in the nation, so that's.
What'd you do to get the sheriff on?
Any more, uh, questions we got on, uh, for the agenda for, for Monday? And you're gonna be checking with, uh?
Oh, Rusty's here now, I want, you know, we had, and, and doing our website?
Yes.
We have an opportunity to save a good bit of money on our cost if we use our credit card purchases or all transactions, uh, go through our website provider. And, we have an issue with the tax collector's office. You know, she's happy with who she's got and don't really wanna change, but the bigger part of it is, is our software company, uh, refuses to work with any other provider other than the one they selected.
Talking about for what?
Uh, it's a vendor for doing transactions with credit cards.
Credit card?
Yeah.
That's the one that she had come in before and the one she doesn't have any problems, you know, as far as Judy.
She first came, when she first came in here, she didn't, she had, had a hit problem with them, then they came, then she had a problem, they, she went back.
We swapped a couple times in the last couple of years.
Once she's got now, she likes.
Right.
Yep.
And I guess what you're saying is, that's the ones that, that, I mean, they can't.
No, what I'm saying is, if we use the one that we're about to go to on our, I think, justice court and doing all of our reservations online for our facilities, reserving our buildings.
Right.
We're gonna do that, but it's not enough traffic, it's not enough volume on sales to, to get any substantial discount. But with the tax collector's office.
It would be.
How much would it be, Rusty?
Seven thousand dollars off a year.
And what's the total package right now we're looking at?
Um, you know, we paid over five years, we're paying seventy-five thousand, no, under seventy, just under seventy for our website. That's with hosting costs, support, maintenance, um, you know, security updates, all that. Um, if, if she's on board, that will take seven thousand dollars off of five years, so it drops us down to about forty grand.
So you're looking thirty-five off of that?
Correct.
Which is almost half.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have you discussed that with Judy at all, or?
Yes.
And what, and I'm sure that may be the reason why we're sitting here discussing this.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I passed along her feelings and that's, that's why I'm, why I'm standing up here.
And I'm taking in her feelings with she likes what she's got.
That's correct, yes, sir.
She must not be having any problems at all there, and she's, I mean, is that it?
That's basically what she's saying.
Everything's going smooth after she's been up, down so many rocky roads and bumps. And now she's finally riding.
Right.
Smooth, so.
Right.
And, you know, we pay, on top of that, Delta Computer Company, the software provider for us, a fee monthly for doing a one-page deal for people gonna pay their tags and garbage. And they, uh, refuse to work with anybody unless they wanna work with them. If we could talk to them and they were willing to work with this other company, would that save us, would that give us where we need to be?
Yes, but we'll have to pay Delta to do that. Delta said they'll, if we wanted to work with any other parties with credit card transactions, that we will have to pay them an amount. And that amount was unknown to the gentleman I was talking to.
You had to pay Delta, not for credit, not for using the company that she's using?
Correct, correct.
Someone other than who she's using.
So the way it works right now is when you go online to pay, you know, what, what she deals with, waste and ta, uh, taxes and tags and all that, you go through Delta, Delta uses a third party for credit card transactions, which is, I believe, Official Payments. Um, so Official Payments gets the convenience fee, Delta gets money from us for the pay, the landing page, um, and then we get money put back in our bank account at the end of the day. The way the new site will run is we won't have a monthly fee, um, um, they will just get the money off the convenience fee.
Well, didn't this company she went with, was that the one that, uh?
Rachel came in and then she went with a different one?
We, we currently are using two different credit card providers.
That's correct.
We use one credit card provider for all the swipes that are made at the counter.
Does give the money back.
And we use a different one, one that Delta uses. Uh, for doing online payments. So, you know, I, I was just, you know, you know, trying to work around Judy's feelings too, you're not upsetting her, but trying to save us some money. Uh, if it's possible, we can get either Laura or Craig want to contact Delta and find out why it is they're unwilling to work with another provider and give us a reason.
They have a contract with them. Everybody told me that, they have a contract with Official Payments to use them exclusively.
Would it not be cleaner to have us under one purview as far as all of us? I mean, every, everything under one?
That's what he's talking about.
I mean, that's.
But that, she done, she's got one she likes.
Yeah, but right now, what he's saying is, we got two different ones already, so.
That's correct, that's correct. Now, the reason we have two different ones right now is because the ones that are online, um, they were having to use a web browser to do credit card payments. That web browser was timing out for, for whatever reason on occasion, and it was getting to the point where it was a lot of phone calls to see if a credit card went through, you had a lot of constituents standing around waiting to see if it went through. This new company uses a little, um, uh, application that actually gives you feedback on whether it has connected, hasn't connected, if it's having problems, what the problem is, when the web browser can't do any of that.
So basically, she had trouble at the counter, people coming in paying, it wasn't working right. So she changed to a different one.
I mean, I can understand that too, if you're sitting there as a, somebody standing there trying to get a tag and all.
I, I was just hoping we could work some kinda solution out, either get Delta to change, you know, from where their stance is, uh, or either get Judy to agree to move on and see if we can save us.
Well, how do we know that, going with a new company that's doing our website, how do we know that it'll be trouble for?
Right, that's what, I guess that's why I can question, you know.
We don't, for a fact.
Judy don't wanna move, she's finally found somebody.
Right.
We don't, we don't know that for a fact.
Cause then all of a sudden, it's gonna look back at, we're all the ones that wanted this.
My, my initial thought, okay, the way, the, the road I was heading down was to get, cause Justice Court has said that they're happy with in-court that they use as well. Um, so my thought was set it up for reservations with Janus, set it up for Justice Court, set it up for data requests, and set it up for Judy. Set it up in a way that we can test it, try it, make sure everybody's happy with it. If we're happy with it, then we move to it. If we're unhappy with it and it's a, it's a total bomb, then we back off and we keep using what we're using. That's the road I was heading down.
Good luck.
Well, how soon, okay, with that trial, how soon can we?
Uh, we're about to be going when we get our website, uh, we're gonna swap everybody over and start using, you know, the new credit card vendor.
With, with, with who we can use, yeah, we've been set, we're ready to go next week.
So we're gonna wait?
That's, okay, that, that's where we're working where they could pay online in your department too?
Correct, sorry, I forgot y'all.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 permits for them, but permits for them is, is easy, it's just a flat, it's gonna be a flat rate, I'm assuming, isn't that correct? No?
Well, uh.
No.
See with, see with the other departments, we have to actually integrate the AS four hundred with it, so we know how much the ticket costs, how much the taxes are, all that stuff.
It was a very cozy building.
If, if they get regular building permits for construction, yes, they'll vary.
Okay, okay.
The utility permits a standard fee, but if they can do all their permits online, then.
The plans do all the permits online.
Well, this is gonna be interesting. So, with this test, are we still gonna be able to move forward and what kinda timeframe are you looking at that possibly we can?
Well, Rusty was saying, let's, we're gonna move everything and if everything's working well, then maybe approach her and see if she would come on forward.
So we're gonna use both, both of them still?
Leave both of them online.
Right.
Yeah, correct, correct. Um, if the new one works, then we'll push the old one off to the side. If the new one doesn't work, then we'll just keep pushing the old one.
Wonderful, and we'll do that for.
That way, we don't, we don't drop either one, we try the new one, if it doesn't work for them and they're unhappy, then we're not pressuring anybody to move to anything.
So what I was thinking, since not to upset Judy and to keep everything going good, is try to get Craig to contact Delta Computer and see if we couldn't get them to swap over, uh, other than them having a contract, what it is, they're probably getting a fee off of it.
Right.
You know, they get commission.
Yeah, cause they do, right now, the interface we use, every county uses it.
Right.
So, yeah.
We use that?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
So, but I, I want them to put in writing, you know, and.
Okay, do we just need to give you that okay, or do we need to have that?
Just tell me all, tell me, you want me to call Delta and inquire?
I think that'd be a great idea, anytime we can make things a lot cleaner.
We could maybe get this accomplished without upsetting the apple cart over there.
Well, that, I mean, I understand exactly, you're standing right there and all of a sudden you got problems, that's a, that'd be a, um, accident waiting to happen.
She's had so many problems, you, you know, I've been over there and you, that part's down.
Right.
And she's had, been through so many, and then she's got one now, I know she's going, oh, don't.
Right.
Well, it hadn't even been a year, you know, so.
Still working, and she's been through for about three years.
Yeah.
Trying to get somebody.
Bully miss, you know technology probably more than anybody, and technology can be your worst nightmare.
Rusty, on the, uh, counter payments, how would they do that?
They're gonna do the same thing, from what I understand, did y'all contact her yet? Okay.
I've got the stuff from Ms. Judy, but we're not calling.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, it, it works, this, what I suggested.
Stuff from Ms. Judy?
Contact information.
What I suggested is that they use the same company used for, for over the counter, they did the same thing.
Versus going with the, why?
Cause of web browser problems, same issue.
So we're having that same issue there, and that's why I was asking, okay.
Whether it be the company was down at the time, or whether they had problems in their code, it was, it was something one day after another. And the web browser, again, I can't, I can't tell you any of that, so that's why the applications are nice.
Okay.
You understand web browser, don't you?
Yeah.
I talked to you last time about getting a tablet.
Yes.
Yeah, you were, you were gonna get a tablet and the rest of us are gonna see how that, how that went for you.
So I, I won't move forward with that, it's gonna cost around five hundred dollars.
Uh, if you wanna get a tablet, do, I don't, we need a vote on that or anything like that for Jay to get a tablet?
Did you see all my questions I gave you?
Yeah, I just want a tablet, I don't want an iPad, just, uh.
Yeah, we need to.
With a little keyboard.
Add that item to the agenda.
I actually asked something for you.
Yeah.
So you're wanting a Microsoft Windows tablet?
We can do it Monday.
Okay, you want a Windows tablet?
Yeah.
It's gonna cost more, five hundred dollars.
Really?
iPad's five hundred dollars, Microsoft tablet will cost you around eleven hundred.
And we're looking at just you doing this to kinda test the waters.
Make sure we get two quotes.
Yeah, maybe not.
Yeah, make sure you don't have web, web browser.
Not necessarily run the Windows eight. Not necessarily run the Windows eight, though, what's the other OS?
Windows seven? You're gonna get it with Windows eight nowadays.
The other tablets, what, other than the iPad, you get every other tablet, what OS are they running?
Well, we got Apple, which runs iOS, you got, um, Android, and you've got Microsoft, that's your three options.
So Android not work?
We could try Android, yeah.
All right, let me ask you a question, do we need to make a motion to add this or anything like that? Good, okay, so y'all can talk after the, after we get through that.
Yes, sir.
Wonderful.
All right, one more thing, and I'm done, uh, where are we at on our Department of Corrections?
Uh, we, we met with, um, two representatives from MDOC on, uh, what's today, it's today, Thursday? We met with them on, uh, Tuesday, uh, to review the old JDC location. Uh, my observation was that they, uh, liked the space, um, they saw a lot of potential in the space, Johnny was there, myself, Ms. Laura, uh, and where we left it was they were headed back uh, to visit with their side and they were gonna get word back to us about how, how they wanna take the next step forward, if they were gonna take the next step forward, but the, the meeting was positive.
And Commissioner Epps was involved in the.
He's, he's involved in that, he knows that this discussion is ongoing, I don't know how heavily involved he is with details.
Yeah.
But yes, he is involved.
Okay, and he didn't shoot it down?
Apparently not, they were there.
Not sure.
I was encouraged by the visit.
You was encouraged that it didn't get shot down right then?
Correct.
Gotcha, okay, good. Thank you for running that rabbit.
We should know something fairly soon.
Okay. Anything else? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn until Monday?
We move.
Thank you, sir.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Keith. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.